I now call the Abbeville City Council, regular city council meeting to order, June 18th, 2024. But, Ms. Kathy, can you give me a roll call?
Councilwoman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Bruce Sorensen.
Here.
Councilman Bruce Sorensen.
Here.
Councilman Tichet is at.
Here.
Mayor Gilford.
Having your floor present, I'll ask everyone to stand for the prayer and the pledge. Councilwoman Bruce Sorensen, will you lead us in the prayer?
Yes. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and i forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Thank you. And for the pledge, I would like to call on my godchild, Gabriel White. Gabriel, will you come up here and lead us in the pledge?
Please face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before getting started, housekeeping. We limit presentations to seven minutes. Comments on any agenda item to three minutes. And once your item of business is handled, you are welcome to leave. You just asked that you do so quietly. That being said, is there any public comments on any agenda items prior to starting the meeting? None?
I'd like to make comments.
Okay. Stand and state your name for the record.
My name is Jared Young.
Okay, is it about an agenda item, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Agenda item number two.
Okay.
The public records request policy changes or updates.
Yes, sir.
Did we openly post what the updates were gonna be before the meeting that y'all were gonna have? Where the changes might be that might be placed?
No, because this is the discussion right now.
Okay, so it's a discussion.
And then you have to advertise in ordinance, it has to be changed by ordinance. So right now it's just a policy that we have.
All right, just ask you, y'all, keep in mind that these FOIA requests or public records requests are for the people. Does hope we can see the transparency of our government, to watch how it acts. The things that it does, a lot of these policies are state policies, federal policies, that can't be changed, as I understand it.
So, Ms. DM, just so you know, our policy was written in 2007 and hasn't been changed since then, and so it's gonna be changed to meet what is currently the state policy.
Sounds great, just wanted to help out.
Good, thank you. Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir?
Yes, Matt Thomasy.
Yes.
Like to speak on agenda item two as well.
Okay.
I had an opportunity to.
Oh, are you with Citizens Fund in Louisiana?
I'm here personally, myself. I do work for Citizens, yes, sir. I'm here personally. I had an opportunity to pull up from the packet that was on the website, and it seemed to be missing a page. The modified public records request policy. And it says, as modified, June 10th, 2024. I just wanna address one item on there, and that is under section four, cost. It says D. If it is necessary to have an IT firm research email accounts, the city of Abbeville must be reimbursed for such fees charged by the IT firm. An advance deposit to cover those costs can be required. And I bring that up because you just made the comment about bringing the policy in line with state law. That was not something that was in the previous policy, that is something that was added or is being considered to be added. And I'd like to bring your attention to Louisiana Revise Statute Title 44, Section 32. That is Louisiana state law that covers which fees can be charged for public records. And it's very limited. It says you can charge for copies, you can charge for the transmission of electronic records, and if you make accommodation for somebody to view records after hours, you can charge for the time staff have to sit with that person after hours. Past that, there are no fees that can be charged for public records outside a court order. So I'm just bringing that to everyone's attention. As it stands, section four, cost D, the use of an IT firm and charging that cost to a person for a public records request is not a lawful cost. It's not a lawful fee that can be charged in state Louisiana. In fact, it is the custodian's duties in Louisiana to collect, segregate, redact, examine, and review records. So whoever the custodian is, whether it be the mayor or the city clerk, whoever's designated the custodian, that is their job. And if the city decides they wanna hire a third party to do that work, that is a cost the city incurs themselves. It is not something they can pass on to the requesting. So I just ask y'all to take that into consideration when reviewing that portion of policy.
I'm gonna let our city attorney talk.
Thank you.
I'll discuss it when we get to the agenda item.
Any other public comments before we? He's gonna discuss it when we get to the agenda item. Any other discussion part and moving on with the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to personnel. Item number one, to introduce the new municipal employee civil service director, Ms. Kathy Sellers. Counsel and mayor and audience, Ms. Kathy, as you all know, Ms. Anne Hordy is retiring, and we're sad to see her go. But they did do an extensive search, and we had some qualified candidates to apply. And the civil, this position is actually hired by our municipal civil service board. So they held interviews, I think it was last week, and they selected Ms. Sellers to take over Ms. Anne Hordy's place. So she has hit the ground running and doing homework before she even started her job. She comes to us, she spent 20 years with AT&amp;T, working as a team manager and with a lot of customer service experience. We've had our initial kickoff meeting and some additional meetings this week. I think she's gonna be a great fit for the team, and I'm excited to have her on board. We both will be learning together. I think she's gonna be a good fit, so. Ms. Kathy, would you like to say a word?
Yes, yes, I think you so. Sometimes.
Nice to meet you. Welcome aboard. Anything we can do to make your job easier and better, let us know.
Of course. Welcome. Thank you, welcome.
And I think I saw you every day, every day, 360 about days a year, even 366 sometimes, walking your dog. And I said, I wonder who that young lady is? Well, welcome.
Yes.
And you live here in Abbeville, right?
Yeah, just down the street.
Right, back over there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, welcome. Next is presentations, we have none, so moving on to approval of bills and budget reports. I don't know when to ratify bills, pay in the month of May, 2024.
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, to approve the budget to actual report for May, 2024.
Second.
A motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, item number one, to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Romanian Parish Police Jury to participate in call sharing of expenses to repair the sidewalks around the Romanian Parish Courthouse.
I move.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any questions or comments?
Any beautification downtown is appreciated, and we are happy to work with the police jury on that particular project.
And this is actually gonna eliminate some trip hazards and improve access to the courthouse. They called us and asked if we would consider repairing all of the sidewalks in partnership with them as part of the project, so. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, Ms. Dill?
Reducing rails to get up and down on sidewalk?
We, they actually just, once we take this action, they're gonna take action tomorrow night in their meeting, and then it's gonna go to the engineering firms for some recommendations. So Chris, remember, Ms. Dill asked about rails to get into the courthouse for accessing around there. Just bring that up to the engineers. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Ray from St. Julian.
Can you state your name? I'm sorry.
Ray from St. Julian.
Ray from St. Julian.
I got cost.
The cost of the repairs, right, I know that the engineers were estimating at the total cost to be $105,000, which our share would be $15,250, but we won't know until they do the construction estimate, once both parties state agreement to do it. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, to update the public records request policy, I'm gonna turn over to board to make his comments.
So this came about basically due to the number of recent requests that we've got. We really hadn't paid attention to it much, because we hadn't had any requests in the last several years. But once we started getting all those requests, we looked at the policy, which made me turn and look at the law and several attorney general opinions and stuff. And like the mayor said, it hadn't been updated in a while, so we're looking to update it. Actually, the only thing we really changed so far is, and this is more of an informational thing, I think he was sent a copy of the draft. There's a few other things to change, but right now, I think we actually went down on the, on the price per copy.
We were charging a dollar a page per copy, and we're charging 25 cents, I think, in the new one, as suggested amount.
And then we didn't address electronic reproduction prior, so we added cost for that, and that's 10 cents per page. And what was left off and that we're gonna add is plus the actual cost of the drive that we have to put it on, so the city's not losing money on that.
The previous policy was just a $5, when somebody would call and want a copy of the minutes, before we had the minutes online and before we had the meetings online, when someone wanted a copy of the minutes where the recording went.
Audio corrected.
They would, they would put it on a CD, and so it was a $5 charge for that. So the last time that policy was updated was when you were still learning minutes to CDs.
So again, we're gonna, we're gonna add that to section C, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but we're gonna amend to add the actual cost of the drive that we put it on in addition to the 10 cents per page. And then, which obviously.
The IT is, yeah, the IT is what you brought up.
Yeah, which obviously those, those prices are very reasonable. The IT charge, that provision that we put in there was after looking at several AG opinions as well as other municipalities and what they do, and it's part of their policy. You know, at this time, I'll be happy to discuss with them, and we do have some ongoing conversations with some of the requests made by his entity, but I'll look at what he's citing, but as of right now, when we come back with the final draft of the policy, I mean, as it stood right now, I would still recommend putting that in there. I mean, we just don't have the capacity and the manpower to deal with this many public records requests.
Especially as broad as they are. I mean, I've spent the last, you spent the last two weeks going.
You know, like the law says, you can charge for overtime. Well, I can assure you, it'd be a lot cheaper to pay an IT guy a couple hours to find these things versus the mayor working overtime.
Well, I don't get paid overtime, but I'll work it anyway.
Well, we could charge whatever that would be, you know?
I'll work it anyway.
So I don't know, well, I'll play with it some, I'll figure it out, and what they gotta understand is that this is in no way trying to avoid.
Yeah, and we don't have the personnel, we don't have the capacity of personnel that it takes to serve all of these.
We've gotten so many in the last several weeks, and they so broad and.
It's a huge cost.
And vague, and, you know, there's not a folder or file to go to for these documents. I mean, we're spending countless hours searching emails, going through texts. So we're just trying to streamline as best we can.
Is any of that, you know, what may have provoked this, or is just somebody wanting to know how we operate public records?
No, it's all about rails to trails.
Because at what?
Rails to trails.
Oh, okay.
Do you even know what that is?
Yeah.
Well, I know, 'cause it's not a, I mean, I'm just saying, because I think it's something that the council is pushing at this time, which it's not.
We're not pushing that.
Yeah.
I'll move to update as the attorney has advised.
Well, what I'll do is, because I left off the.
The drive.
The drive cost, which is just an oversight, as well as the concern raised by this gentleman, I would ask that we put it back on next agenda.
I will move that to table tonight.
And then, but everything else is pretty much the same, there's a few things we changed about, you know, it has to be public notice, we have to post it somewhere, we updated the emails of where to send the requests and.
I think we also changed the time, like listed the times were open, I don't know that that was in the old policy.
Where did it, where did it?
And the other policy said we, they couldn't reproduce, copy and reproduce it.
Yeah, that's not legal.
And we took that out, so.
Where did it come from that it was the council that was?
I have no idea.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on item number two? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, to approve change order number one relative to downtown Abbeville Street Improvement Project.
I move.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, Mr. Jean, are you covering that?
Any question?
That is for the pipe work that we did, is that for the pipe work, the repairs to the stormwater and sewer drains under the street?
Change order number one is in front of you. The first item is just to make some adjustments to the plans, to things that were changed, but there's no, no cost involved with that item. E1 through E5 is for repair of underground drainage. And those costs are on the right side of the table, but total of $454.50.
I think Chris went over this with y'all.
And this is the work that was done during the whole month.
I'm ready to go, motion.
Okay, motion in a second on table, any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, to approve payment, a partial payment estimate number two relative to downtown Abbeville Street Improvement.
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Jean, you have the floor.
Yes, this is again for items completed during the month of May, and the total amount during that period was $308,653.98.
And Jean, you still feel they're ahead of schedule?
I need to do that number.
This week might give them a.
Time here is 13%, and the completion is 19%.
Excellent.
That's good. Motion in a second, any, no further questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, to approve purchase of transformers for stock from Solomon in the amount of $14,138.
Second.
Motion in a second, questions or comments? Stuart, these won't be in for a year, that's all we are hurting them now, right?
Yeah.
Stuart, how is your hurricane season stock now?
Oh, it's pretty good.
Excellent, thank you, and appreciate all you do.
And that is a permanent price, I mean, a year from now, they're not gonna charge us double or triple.
No, we're gonna pay for it upfront, right, Stuart? Or you get them, we pay for it?
No, we pay for it when we come in.
Okay.
It's a locked-in price.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, to approve payment of the invoice in the amount of $12,663.08 payable to CTG Gunworks LLC for the purchase of bulletproof vests, Chief Mike Hardy got the floor.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a vest, I mean, this is a grant that we were approved for to commission a law enforcement, a law, imagine a law enforcement council. It was for criminal patrol, but we, at the point where we're not gonna use up the whole grant, so we had it modified by our grant writer and the lady at law enforcement council. And we're gonna use that money to purchase 10 vests for police officers that don't have new vests right now. We have about half that got them last time, this will purchase the other half, except for the last new hires.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any questions or comments? I need to say that that was with grant money.
Yes, ma'am.
To reimburse. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion of possible action authorizing the mayor to execute agreement to cancel and extension of contractor Crime Fighters LLC, Hardy got the floor.
So we had an agreement with Crime Fighters of Louisiana that, that he provided some cameras that we were linked into with our APD and had access to, and some of these cameras apparently are manufactured in China, which violates a state statute. So we are, we're just voiding that. He's agreed, the Louisiana Crime Fighters is, has agreed, so we're gonna void that contract, he's gonna return the funds, and then he's got new cameras that comply, and he's gonna add those cameras and even negotiate a new deal.
Manufactured where? Iowa.
They have parts from, no, from China.
You have the new cameras manufactured.
They, parts from China or by certain manufacturers from China, and, and he's acknowledged that's the case, so he's in agreement.
I move.
Motion in a second on table, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes. Mr. Frederick, Chief Anthony Frederick.
So Brooks does have camera that will replace him?
Yes.
Okay.
How many cameras?
Oh, there's, there's 18, I don't wanna get into a lot of detail about this because of public safety, but there are 18 locations with cameras, and each location has multiple cameras.
Yep.
18 locations.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number eight, to approve emergency debris removal contracts, June 1, 2024 through May 31st, 2025, Kim Tuchet, motion in a second.
Second.
All right, Kim, you have the floor.
Yeah, Mayor, so this is an annual contract for debris removal, in case you get an install for the first 72 hours, which will be reimbursed by FEMA if you have contracts on file. So we got with four contractors, we got three contracts back with their, their price list, and we recommend approving them so that if we do get a storm, we have somebody in line.
So we have three contractors?
We have three, correct.
They are Glen Legge Construction, Acadiana Shell, and Storm Trent. We have a motion in a second, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Kim.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine is Kim also. To approve the contractor Primo Tichet and Associates LLC for extraordinary emergency recovery events for June 1, 2024.
Second.
May 31st, 2025. Motion in a second on the table.
Again, this is our annual contract for management of the debris removal, for the first 72 hours, so it incurs no cost to the city for both of them unless we have, you know, some.
Who will be the, who will be the point man on that for your team? Any other questions or comments?
I'm just, I just probably don't have.
I hope I don't have to talk to you all already.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree. Thank you, you.
Thank you, Kim.
No hurricane.
I have a motion in a second on table, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Old business, none. Moving on to departmental reports, item number one, engineers, Mr. Jean.
Yeah, just a matter of reporting on the short contract with the force main, that went from one end down to the other. The final part, enter that force made, has been completed. It needs to be tested from the end at the plant to the river, the rest has already been tested. And once that's tested, then the bore holes which was dug to make the tide can then be filled, as you know, they're preparing to do that. If it tests fast, then it won't be that much longer. Like if it doesn't bad, you have to repair the leak on the face of water and do some extra searching for where the problem is. So after that is done, we have two aerial exams to be clean up of all the work surfaces that they worked on, and build pump station for Mont Carmel and the pump station for Thomas Street.
And Mr. Jean, considering the length of this contractor, should we not have also received sufficient compaction that overlay of patch and cut could be done reasonably soon after?
The patching has already been done, but deep in the line is, but what's left, gonna be left to be done will be with concrete.
Yes.
From the bottom to the top with compaction.
But, but over time, we've had sufficient and excessive compaction that should not provide a delay at the end, correct?
Well, this contractor is so slow, I can't.
If I never seen a contract like that.
Yeah, that's why we're all trying to move it as quick as we can.
Yeah, but I don't know that.
Tell him as soon as he gets an.
Because we have alternatives for the end delay.
Right, right.
So I had said before that when you get started again, when you finish this first phase, that you might wanna look at some action for delays.
As soon as he finishes his testing, we want the road repaired.
Right.
Before he does any other work. You know that, that's, that's what we want done, as soon as he says his test.
Not gonna bring another favor to him until he gets.
That's right.
All the pipeline done.
And that's all, that's a lot down board around the railroad tracks, because if that pipeline runs underneath, then all of that, so all of those holes that you see in that area are from that contractor, so wow.
But it was.
It's terrible, definitely repairing that.
I wanted to do, I said, well.
And we talked to him today, and he says, well, the equipment he needs to do that is on its way to be tested.
Oh.
It's a special equipment that they, it's on its way, but.
From China?
Oh, I just did.
A month ago, a month ago, we talked to you, he's back in town, and the truth of the matter is, the equipment's on another job, and when they finish that one, they come and do. That's, that's the result, so I think.
Well, we can get on a call.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Um, he needs to fix the fencing on the west side of the river. On the, on the Bruce Art Sugar property on the west side, the fencing's all messed up, and Chris, y'all need to spray it.
No, that's, no, that's completely.
I know, but he needs to, he needs to, it's fallen down again. The fencing, the temporary fencing he put up because some.
That's gonna be fixed after he finishes the, the right away.
Yeah, and he needs to go straighten it up for this contract. Chris, you got that? Okay. Anything else on that project?
About that project.
Anything else from you, Mr. Jean, under your reports?
No, that's all I have on my agenda.
Okay. Kim?
Well, good.
Okay. Attorney for?
Nothing else.
Public Works Department, Chris?
I have nothing, I'll take questions if you have any. Chris, Chris, getting his feet in the sign or? Yes, sir. Game installed tomorrow morning. Good man. 25 miles an hour. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Terry, how you doing? I'm good, how are you? Good, good, nice to see you smiling.
How many sheets of paper do you have in your hand?
Just two, I'm done, just the agenda.
Fire in the air for floor.
I'll be very quick, simple, tomorrow starts our own polestar sexual tournament, starts from Wednesday and ends on Sunday, 27 total teams attending this weekend, so we should have a great week of baseball, and Mother Nature decides to cooperate, and I'll have to do any type of seal meetings. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, I got a couple things. I apologize for missing last meeting, as you know, I had a family emergency, so thank y'all for, for getting through that meeting without me. If you had some questions about agenda items, you can always reach out to, outside of the meeting, but City Hall will be closed tomorrow in observation of June 10th, just want everybody to know that. Also, thank you to everybody who attended the first coffee talks, Chief Mike Hardy, and we actually had a guest, Troy Ebert showed up, our new representative, so he talked a little bit, I thought it went really well. Troy talks, Troy serves on the State Insurance Committee, so as you all know, insurance is a huge problem here, so he kinda gave an update of what, what happened at the Capitol, you know, how they think that could affect us moving forward, how it might help the situation, and just get kinda gave what's going on with insurance from his perspective, and he's also in real estate. So I thought that was a good discussion. Chief Hardy and I spoke to the group that showed up about issues with crime and the things he's doing, and we're doing as a city to try to help with that situation. But anyway, I thought it went really well, and I invite everybody to come to the next one. It's gonna be July 11th, 7:00 AM to 8:30, and our guest for the next one will be Sheriff Eddie Moley, who will be sworn in as of July 1st, so he will be, he's agreed to be the guest of the next one. So it's just a casual conversation, show up, buy your own, I don't buy you breakfast, you gotta buy your own, but buy your breakfast, and, and we'll there just to talk casually, chat. This one, we didn't pick the location yet, we had the last one at Southern Spread, it was this week, was that this week, I think it was? It was at Southern Spread, but we wanna rotate it, give all the breakfast places.
I'll just add real fast, we should know tomorrow for sure where the location is, we're just trying to get clarification from the business owner before we post it, so sometime tomorrow, Thursday, we'll have it out.
We're working, we think it may be Pork Rush Tom, but I need to make sure, July 11th, it's gonna be.
It's always the second Thursday of the month from 7:00 to 8:30.
Okay. So that'll be July 11th, and probably at Pork Rush Tom, but she'll announce it when she confirms the location. Also, our master plan meetings will be this Saturday, June 22nd, this is going to be the design. is going to be the design charrette, um, so there's going to be, there's two meetings, one from ten to two, uh, ten to twelve at A Como, um, that one will be a conversation about all of the city of Abbeville, but the design portion of the charrette will be focusing on the Martin Luther King to A Como corridor, so, you know, that, they're gonna give special interest to that corridor. Then we're gonna have a second one in the afternoon from two PM to four PM, again, public, public input on lots of items, but the design charrette of the two to four o'clock will be focusing on the North Lyman corridor, so basically from the bypass through Charity Street into South Lyman, uh, because of our Solac CC or Community College and our middle school there, so, the two to four PM in the afternoon will be at J H Williams in the cafeteria, so you can park in the front, you know, through the front door, and we'll be in the cafeteria, it's floating style, so you don't have to come the whole time, you can come and give your input and leave as you wish, um, but we'll be there for two hours in the morning at A Como, and two hours in the afternoon at J H Williams. And then, I just want to say, I know there were some questions or comments last, last meeting, which I wasn't in attendance of, about emergency planning, and I did write an emergency plan for the city before I ever took office, once, once I won the election, I sat down with Mayor Piazza, and I wrote everything that, you know, I know that he does ahead of storms, uh, Chris and his team has reviewed that, they've added their own sections, so we have a, basically, an emergency preparedness manual for our hurricanes that, that was put in place, um, you know, we continuously reading it and editing it and adding a freeze plan because of what happened last December, so, um, we are, I know we don't talk about it enough, because we don't ever wanna say it out loud, but we are actively working on that on a weekly basis, so, um, I think our team is ready, we have Stuart ordered supplies welded in advance, knowing that we have some, you know, short fuses, it's hard to get ports and stuff for our electrical grid, so, we have a good stock there, um, you know, we, our, our water plant's ready, I think everybody's ready, we just hope we don't have to actually go through a storm, but, I did wanna say that. Limping Park opened this week, um, I, I didn't get much feedback, I know it's kinda rainy, but, um, I think people are enjoying the new fish and pier, the walk-in trail's back open, uh, we did have an agenda item last time that I know y'all tabled, I'll bring it up at another meeting, um, we can discuss it some more, that was to discuss whether or not we wanted to open the walk-in trail before sunrise, and if so, putting in lights, um, but I know it was tabled, so we'll discuss that in the near future and see which I wanna do. The dog park, we will be moving the dog park fencing, um, the idea will be to put the dog park towards the front, where some of those trees are, the guys have started clearing it out, and we wanna clear it out where there's shade in there for people with their dogs in the dog park, so as we clear that out, um, we're gonna relocate the fencing, so the dogs are separated from the fish pond, and, and they have some shade for the people walking their dogs, so, we will be coming back to you guys and talking about that at a future date also, the dog park's gonna take a little bit longer to open. The water plant, just wanna say, give, give special recognition to Maria and her team who stepped up to provide water to the adjacent Water District, Magnolia Water, as you all know, had a catastrophic damage to a pressurized tank at their, at their water plant, and, so they lost water and unable to produce water, um, and so our team stepped up, thankfully. Mr. Jean, do you know when that valve was put in between Magnolia and us, was it in twenty-ten when y'all did revisions to the plant?
I can give you a guess, it's probably ten years, fifteen years.
So, there was a plant that probably when they, when they redid the plant, they probably added that, they added a valve connection?
When they came online fully, I think that's when we made the agreement with two water districts on each end of town, and we used it when last time we renovated the plant, which was about fifteen years ago.
And we'll probably need it again when we do our work next year.
Yes, probably.
So, um, there is a, there is a valve to provide water to and from Magnolia also to Southeast District number one, right? So, that's the two that we're interconnected with, so, we were able to open that valve, and then find the secondary valve that they didn't know about, someone tripped over, I think that's how they found it, but, uh, anyway, they were able to get water to the, the people that are on Magnolia, so, the team ordered everything they need to be able to produce a little bit more water, they, they don't produce nearly as much as us, so we can keep up with it, so far, we've had no issue that I know about. Chris, have you heard of any issues?
No issues so far.
Yeah, okay.
Just want to note on that, both water districts combined can never supply water to the city.
I think Magnolia produces five hundred thousand gallons a day, and we produce three point something, three point two, is that right, two point nine on a slow day and three point two in a day?
If y'all talk to Water District number two, and, uh, we tied both districts in one time, when we had to put the plant down.
So, we can help them, and they can't really help us?
Well...
No, I know, they can, but it's not gonna be at the, the amount we consume, yeah, okay, that's it, any other questions about, okay, moving on. Police Chief Mike Hardy, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am, uh, all I have to give is that, uh, our three new recruits are still taking tests, so far, everybody's passing everything.
Good. Any questions for Chief? Bar Chief, June here.
Yes, ma'am, our two new recruits have four weeks down and ten weeks to go.
Doing okay?
Good enough.
Yeah. All right? Any questions, Chief Two? Moving on to council, Councilman Hardy. Councilman Bruce Orde.
A quick question, Mayor, uh, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, sir.
A property on April twelfth that I notified you about was eighteen inch tall grass, now it's forty inch tall grass, can you tell me when we will take action against that?
What's the address?
That would be eight oh four South Jefferson.
It was cut over the weekend.
It has been cut?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilwoman Bruce Orde.
Uh, yes, uh, two things, Juneteenth day, I was hoping that Draylon would be here, everything was beautiful, and, for everyone out there that participated, donated, uh, and made it a huge success, I say thank you, and Byron, I'm still smiling, um, Kaitlin Smith was a phenomenal guest speaker, um, and he spoke of the times he remembered when Juneteenth was actually held in, at Como Park as a kid, one night, and also, we had our own, Miss Carlton Campbell, who was a guest speaker there, so, congratulations, and I see Ms. Raven, and every time I see her, I'm going to say, next time, let me know about that dance, for the little girls.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Campbell?[1755.22]